If you'll please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Bassil.
Happy New Year. Council, Happy New Year.
You know, one of the most hardy plants in the entire world is bamboo. You almost can't get rid of it. It filters water. It stops soil erosion. It's tall and strong and flexible, and it has an acid in it that makes it almost fire-retardant. It can't be burned. I think about a community like Allen Park with all of its wonderful people. It's kind of like bamboo. We're stronger together, but sometimes not all of us are strong. Sometimes all of us are not strong at times. So I'm going to ask, as we pray, to think about those who may be struggling, especially with those who are struggling with hope that they're missing in their heart. There's always help. You can call a friend, go to a neighbor, even Google it for you younger folk and find help and crisis phone numbers, but whatever you do, don't give up. And of course, I believe in faith, and that's why I pray. Please allow me to pray. Lord, we thank you for this wonderful place and the people who lead us and serve with us. And I'm asking that you would bless those who are leading us, give them wisdom and vision. Lord, we're thanking you for a strong community, wonderful people. But, Lord, we're also praying for those of us at times who are not so strong and maybe not always wonderful. Give us help and hope, and if not, bring a friend to us to provide what we need, and we thank you. Amen.
Thank you. Michael, if you'll please take the roll call.
All right, Madam Mayor. Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
Pro Tem Estimer.
Present.
And Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck, second by Mr. Barr. Too close together. Any corrections or changes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to remove the city administrator from the appointees and do them separately. Under the organized organizational business.
We have a motion to review the city administrator separately from the reappointments. Is there a second?
I'll support, Mayor.
So I have a motion by Nick, supported by Schleck, to separate the city admin from the list on A1.
And then do we ask the original motion?
Well, no, you got to call back question. So the rest of the council can vote for it, or they could vote against it, and then it would go back to the regulars.
Thank you. All in favor of removal, say aye.
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 No.
No.
Okay, we're going to have to do a quick roll call. This is to separate the city administrator from the list of appointees on item A1. Councilman Barr.
A, yes.
Councilman Estimer? Councilman Marcos?
No.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nick? Mayor McLeod?
No.
And Councilman Valerius?
No.
The yeses have it, it will be separated.
Okay, now we go back to the original motion, and second, is this acceptable to Mr. Schleck and Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion has carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 19th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Councilwoman Schleck.
Nick.
Nick. I'm looking that way. Walking that way. Any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. We move on to organizational business, which is standard after an election for the appointment and reappointment of the department heads and other administrative non-union personnel. We were given the list. We have removed Mr. Kibbe from this list. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the list?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Has been approved. Now I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Kibbe.
A motion. Time out. Does he have a contract, a current contract?
Yes, they all have current contracts.
But a written one with the date?
I'd have to go back into my file drawer and look.
Yeah, let's be, okay. I think it's clear what I'm getting at. Let's just be careful here, I just want to say. Okay, I have, for Mr. Kibbe, what was the motion?
It was to review his reappointment separately. And I have a, I had a motion by Mr. Marcos.
Mr. Valerius.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments? All in favor of removal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No. Motion has carried. Thank you all. Now we move on to the city administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a few updates on what's going on here with the city this week. The Finance Department will be starting the budget process for the 2425 budget year that'll begin on July 1st. I find it so hard to believe that it seems like just yesterday we were worried about Y-2K. Here we are. Michael Loughlin and Tom Murray will be attending the Michigan Advanced Public Services Institute, MAPSI, training that'll be in St. Joseph's of Michigan here on April 28th through May 1st. The MAPSI program offers management training and allows participants to continue, to earn continuing education credits for their water distribution licenses, which is required by the state of Michigan. Just want to congratulate the following employees for their years of service with the city of Allen Park. Darlene Swovland, who's our accounts payable clerk, 10 years, that was on January 2nd. And Jacob Dedvukovic, five years, he's with the DPS, that was also on January 2nd. And just a quick reminder, we'll be closed for Martin Luther King holiday on Monday, January 15th.
We have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Estimer. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Now we move on to public comments. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live, do not give us your full address, and limit your comments to four minutes and civil.
Hello, Council. My name is Rodney Starr. I'm on Reek Road in the lovely city of Allen Park. I am on your agenda today, one of the residents who put their name in to be treasurer with that, and I just want you to put a face with the name with that. You have some of the details in there, in your packet with that, but I've been in Allen Park for 20-some years. I love the city. Was on the DDA for a while, run my own business, graduated in finance from Michigan State, but I just wanted to be here to, before you vote, so you know what, who's on the other end, who was the other name there, and just give you a little recognition for that. And I thank you, thank you all for everything.
Hi, Dan Lloyd, Asker Avenue. So I, first off, I just want to say, I know that...
You don't need that.
I know that what you all do up here is incredibly hard, and I know that each week when you guys come in here, the reasons that you do the things that you do have their own motivation, and I, and I don't know any of that backstory, anything related to that. But I just wanted to speak from my own personal experience, working with Mark Kibbe for four years. I sleep well at night, knowing that Mark is coming in every day to do the work that he does. I have told him multiple times that he must be crazy to be in this line of work every four years and have a whole brand-new slate of bosses, okay? I have one boss I have to worry about. He has seven, all right? And I, and I know you all in turn have about $35,000, which is a big number too, to consider. I know that the decisions, and Mark will tell you too, we have disagreed often and sometimes loudly with each other about things. However, never once in the time that I have worked with him has my, have I ever been in doubt that Mark was acting in the best interest of the city, the best interest of the employees? I just felt it was necessary, from my own personal experience, to come up and to bear witness to that. Thank you all for what you do. I genuinely appreciate all of you, including our employees. Thank you so much, and you guys have a great night.
Good evening. Tina Rigetti Leslie. I am going to echo what former Councilman Lloyd just said, and I want to thank you for doing the right thing and by reappointing Mark Kibbe as the administrator of this city. I can't think of enough things that he hasn't done as being on council with him. I don't think the city would have gotten out of receivership or where it's at right now without him and the great team that you have, the rest of the employees that you also reappointed tonight. So thank you again for doing the right thing. Have good evening.
Ray Magussen, Quant. I'm here as a concerned citizen today, very concerned. Not too long ago, we had an election. The people of Allen Park spoke. They voted. They talked to a number of people. A number of people talked to me. I told them pretty much what I felt. Today, I heard something, and it scares the living, this scares me anymore. I guess the citizens, when we come up and we vote, after a while, doesn't mean nothing. We had an individual who we voted for, and two meetings in, he resigned. If you don't understand the job you're taking, don't take it. If you don't know the job you're taking, ask what your job and duties are. Don't turn around and say, "Well, you know what? It doesn't pay enough. You're going to lose my respect." I don't want none of you ever, ever, to ask for you to put your signs up in front of my house ever again. We voted for individuals, and it seems like those individuals don't understand why the people voted them in. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Number one, I'm going to ask, how much does it cost to have a special election to fill positions that have individuals or individuals feel that they don't want to serve anymore, and there's nobody in line? The next thing I'm going to ask is, how much, how many names do I need to be on a petition to ask to have you people removed? This is a question I'm asking. I have put my heart and soul into this city. I've worked my ass off in some areas. I do not get paid for what I do. I am scared anymore. I'm scared it's going to happen to our country, and I'm scared it's going to happen to our There's a lot of you people put your heart and soul in, but the people voted you in here for a purpose. They voted for what you stand for. There's a reason why I don't run for city council, and I've been asked a number of times, and I'm going to tell you why. Because I couldn't come up here and speak the way I speak now. With that, you guys have a great day. And just remember one thing, we, the citizens, have placed you in a position that you are in, not just to take it and, and then turn around and says, "You know what? This ain't for me." With that, have a great day. And by the way, I'd like to have my five minutes one day to give the citizens five minutes to come up here and talk. Your meetings don't even last an hour. Have a great day. Boy, I'm right on time, aren't I?
I was going to answer, I couldn't answer the cost of an election because we do have the new nine-day early, all brand-new laws. I'll know after February, but I see what he was getting at. The cost of an election, my estimate would be at least $30-some thousand to pick that. And how many signatures do they need to get recalled? It would be, I think it said... No, it's 25. I had it. I'll get back to Ray. I see him. He's actually one of my election workers, so I'll see him shortly. So, all right.
However, would anybody like to address the fact that we are following what the charter dictates? That says that when there is a vacancy in either clerk or treasurer, we must appoint someone within 60 days of that vacancy? And that's right in the charter. So we are following the law, and we have gotten guidance from both our clerk, who's very familiar with the charter and ordinances, and from our city attorney.
Real quick, so people know out there, they, they ask me, "Well, can you think of when this ever happened?" And as we know, when Kathy Gady left office, Cheryl Bogner took over, but then, if you go further back, Kathy Gady became treasurer when Dominic Baccabella died, and oddly enough, before that, when George Moore died, Bruce Haberkern got appointed treasurer. So whoever it may be, good luck with your health.
Thank you. Mike. There's no others coming up. We will close public comments, move on to the consent agenda, which consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report under purchasing and finance actions, given the finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet, and cash flow. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Marcos, second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution one is to approve the appointment of Angela Lovlak to the position of deputy clerk at a salary of $50,000 effective January 10, 2024. Motion.
Motion.
Motion. Hi, everybody?
I'll second that.
What have we got? Nancy and Tim. Comments or questions?
Mayor, through the chair, I will say that I've been in quite frequently lately since elected, and Angela's been absolutely amazing, just showing me things, her attitude, the way she talks to the citizens at the window. I support this promotion if it were 100 percent.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Angela, if you would please stand up so we can see the new deputy clerk. Welcome.
Don't make me look bad too flat. Don't outdo me too flat. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. You have no idea what a relief this is. Congratulations.
Resolution two is to approve the fire department's request to apply for the 2024 AFG grant for new radios. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to ask for approval to join the Lincoln Park and Wyandotte Fire Department in a regional grant, to apply for that, to replace our portable radios that each firefighter personnel carries on them to all emergency scenes. Our current radios are about nine years old. We were informed by Motorola that they will be out of service within the next year, meaning no parts will be available, except what's in inventory. So this is something that's coming very quickly, and the AFG grant opens up in January and ends at the end of January. So I need to get approval tonight before we have all the cities that are involved. That's why my numbers are, right now, best guesses. We're looking at $2,000 for the JW2 grant writing group to do this regional grant.
I mean, through the chair, we've sort of processed many years, a couple of years ago, to have the, everybody come up and present their grants, just so Council was aware of them beforehand. So some of the times, as Chief was just saying, we don't always know those finite details until the day goes in, and we can bring that information back, but more so just to try to get approval so we make sure that there's no surprises later on.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come to resolution three, to fill the vacant position of city treasurer. Motion to, let's see. Provide a, we have a motion to approve the recommendation of Mr. Estimer. And that would be subject to if he accepts resigning his position?
Yeah, he, it would be the exact resolution, because you can't make him resign before a vote, because, no offense, you wouldn't do this, but if you didn't, you know, you could railroad him, but I just overthink things. But yeah, you would make it, motion to appoint that person upon vacating their council position. So, and of course, if it was, we would ask that he do a resignation letter after the meeting. That way, they don't have, they could still vote on the business they've been charged to, and we could swear him in at a time. As soon as he turns that in, I'll swear him in, and yeah, we pretty much move on with another process. So, again, get a health check if you're going to do it, man. Sorry, I didn't.
All right. A motion to appoint Mr. Estimer upon vacating his council position, followed by a letter of resignation after the meeting. So I have a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick. We have to fill this position within 60 days of it being vacated. Their comments or questions?
I just think the hesitation is we, I believe he's a valuable voice up here, but I understand the need for the treasurer, and he's willing to do that, and maybe get him more into the inner workings of the city, so.
I... Mr. Barr?
I have a question. What about the other individual? Is this what we voted on, too?
Well, I had made the recommendation for Mr. Estimer based on what I had presented in the memo and the fact that, you know, we're very torn here because he makes an excellent mayor pro tem. No question about that. But in conversations with Mr. Estimer, before he ran for anything, he came to my office and we talked, and he indicated that he wanted to run for treasurer. When someone else announced, he determined that he did not want to interfere with that individual, and so he ran for council instead. He wishes to take advantage of this opportunity. As I indicated in, in my memo, he has taken a lot of initiative in learning about the position. He was aware of what it entailed, because he was on the local officers' compensation board, and was very involved in what the salary was going to be for the position going forward. And he also had a lot of communication with the treasurer at that time, who explained exactly what her job entailed and the amount of time that it entailed. And with that familiarity, that piqued his interest. He's taken a lot of time and effort to learn even more about the position. He's come into the office on a regular basis and sat with people who are handling the property taxes. He's identified training courses. He's met with other city treasurers, so I think with that in mind, that, that's my recommendation. If someone wants to put someone else forth, that, that would be up to you. But at this point, I would, even though I would hate to lose him as the mayor pro tem, I, I think that in the long term, it will be best for him and the city.
So we have a motion and a second, Ray.
Yes, Mr. Attorney, I have a motion by Councilwoman Nick, supported by Councilman Marcos, to appoint Timothy Estimer to the position of treasurer upon vacating his council position.
But then, sir, you were going to, you're... I will abstain from the vote. Because you're vulgar yourself, due to obvious financial interests involved. Oh, yeah, you can't, yeah. So, the questions called?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no. We have a treasurer.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Meester.
Yep. Congratulations.
Resolution four is to waive the city bid process, as there is no economic benefit to rebid the water main replacement contract, and approve the offer from Brico Excavating Company to extend their contract through the 2024 construction season. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. We'll go back to the left. Mr. Murray.
Good evening. This is the water main that we previously discussed, I think, at the work session, and asked about what water mains we were going to be doing in the upcoming year. This is one of them that's been on our radar for a little while. It's taken us a minute to get to. It goes around the fire department from Roosevelt down Garfield. Right now, it goes under the railroad tracks through Community Park. It has upward of 18 water main breaks just on that line alone, and we are worried about it going under the railroad tracks and breaking. That becomes a new whole animal for the city if that happens. So therefore, we're proposing to do a new water main that goes down Garfield from Roosevelt. Now, we're going to attach it behind the old DPS facility to White Street and replace White Street as well while we're there, that little dead end. That looping will actually give us better fire flow for our fire department when they're doing training and things of that nature than it currently does, and it will abandon the water main that goes through the park under the new tennis courts and the railroad tracks. Therefore, not having any issues in the future. This is a proposal we have from Brico, who we've had for many years doing our water mains. They're holding their prices, except for materials that have gone up. That's very hard to control in these times. So they're proposing this price, and we're asking for your vote.
And could you give us the total price on that for that resolution?
You'll love me. I do not have the total price on there. I'm sorry.
It's $343,980.
I know, it's 340.
Tom mentioned this line goes, currently goes through Community Park.
Yes.
There was a reason why the tennis courts at Community Park were rough shape.
We're not allowed to talk about that.
There was a water main break there many, many, many years ago, and this was the result. So this will resolve that issue.
Yes.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is carried. Thank you. Now, we will move on to council comments, and this evening, we will start with Mr. Barr.
Well, first off, I want to thank all the citizens that have come up and addressed their, you know, their issues, complaints, and observations. Say congratulations to Detroit Lions, division champs. Yes. Also, I need to say congratulations to the University of Michigan for winning last night with the national championship. I am a green and white guy. However, it's Easter. Other than that, nothing more.
Thank you. Mr. Schlack.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say congratulations to Ms. Lovelock on her new position. I'm sure she'll do a great job, and mention it before Councilman Marcos does. Today's law enforcement appreciation day, so thank you to all those law enforcement officials, present and past, including Jerry here. And I also wanted to say, congrats to U of M, University of Michigan. As you know, I'm a graduate of Michigan State University, but it's great to see the state of Michigan in the news as champions. I can get used to that. I'm ready to say that go whatever that color is, but congratulations to them, and let's go Lions. They have their home in Allen Park, so I'm sure we'll all be watching, and hopefully we can get to the second round. And I'm hoping for Dallas. With that being said, Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and I wanted to say a quote by Martin Luther King. He once said, "One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." And to me, that quote means responsibility and civil disobedience and civil government. I think that speaks a lot about city government and promotes a just society. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. We're going to go next to Ms. Nick.
Angela, I'd like to congratulate you. I've known you a little bit over the years, and I know you're going to do a wonderful job. Also, too, we have a resident that's going to be turning 100 years old, Danella Parr, so I just want to say happy birthday, Danella. I think it's on the 15th of this month. So I know she's asking for some birthday cards, which the address is out there, so if you guys want to send her a birthday card, you know, I think she'd appreciate that. She's turning 100. So with that, God bless, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I just wanted to say thank you for everyone coming out tonight. Mike, to you personally, thank you for all you do, and I'm happy you have a deputy clerk now to help you out. And thank you, Angela, for taking the time to accept that position and give Mike the hand that he so richly deserves. So. Tim.
Okay, just, I feel it necessary to explain my no vote, even though I don't have to, but I want to. There's nothing to do and no disrespect to you at all. I'm happy you're going to serve as treasurer for Allen Park. And really, the reasoning behind my no vote is simply, we had an election that you ran for as a city council person, and you obtained the highest number of votes as, was elected mayor pro temp of the city. Again, I don't question any of your qualifications, your ability to perform the duties of treasurer, and I firmly believe that you'll be a good treasurer and serve Allen Park well. Okay? So I just want to make that clear. All right. This vote was even made more difficult because now that there's a city council position opening, my vote reflected the fact that I'm, I'd love to serve with the next four years with a former council member and fellow teacher who I truly feel deserves and wants to serve as a councilman for the city. So. In saying that, I thank everyone, and I yield.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Marcos.
He did steal my National Law Enforcement Day.
It's good to have you back up.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to thank Darlene Swovland and Jacob Dvukovit. Oh, those are tough names. For 10 years and 15 years respectively for our service to Allen Park. Thank you very much. I forgot what I was going to say. Anyhow, Angela, Angela, welcome. I have not met you, but I've heard from the grapevine that you're in training anyway, so congratulations and welcome. Other than that, I have nothing else to say, other than I was, National Law Enforcement Day was stolen from me. I won't forget. So, it's come back up is National Apricot Day and National Take the Stairs Day. Thank you very much, and support local businesses, as our former councilman Charles always used to say. And, oh, the Elks Club, Tuesdays and Fridays, always dinner. Go there. They're always great, and they're inexpensive. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Estimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Take a few minutes here, if you wouldn't mind, to make sure I have the right speech to read. I had two, I had two written. I fully understand the apprehension of the council, and I appreciate the covenants that you put in me to serve the treasurer position. Ladies and gentlemen, it comes with excitement, and it's definitely a certain amount of angst. You saw the emotion in Mr. McGusson tonight. So I know that there are folks out there that won't understand. Sometimes we do things and people don't get the privilege to have a conversation or hear the understanding. So I understand that, and I will have a private conversation with Mr. McGusson. But this, what I'm about to tell you is sort of where my thoughts are on this process. So tonight, I announce my intent to step down from the office of city council, where, as it was pointed out, I serve as the mayor pro temp, and that will be effective at the end of the meeting. I do have a resignation letter that was written just in case, and I will do that so that I accept the appointment for city treasurer. Reached out to many to consult me on this decision. I've had their support as my families and my committees. I want to thank all those that supported me on city council during my run, and believe me, that was not an easy decision. This was a very difficult decision. Ironically, it was through those conversations, though, during the campaign and after, that I came to realize that I could serve the city also from the inside. May not be a vote here at the table, but I believe that working with administration on a day-to-day basis, working in the city from the inside, I believe that there's some valuable conversations that could be had. Some may not have known before the mayor spoke about it, but prior to running, choosing to run for council, I was preparing, in fact, the city treasurer run. I met with Mr. Liberati over coffee, and it was at that time that he indicated to me that he was going to run. Because this position is something I'm confident that I can do effectively. overseeing the city's finances, taking care of tax issues for our citizens, day-to-day operations, and responding to our local citizens is something I 100%, I'm 100% confident that I'm able to do and comfortable doing so. While council certainly has its challenges, I believe I rose to the occasion and embraced the challenges I will face as city treasurer, and there's things I've prepared for to get me to the spot my whole entire life. My prior history, involvement on city boards such as the DDA, the Planning Commission, and the Compensation Commission, working as chairman for each of those. Also, my prior experience as an elected member of the South Gate Board of Education for six years. This experience, I believe, led to the appointment as to, as my prior work experience showed many of the same qualities and qualifications needed to make this specific role successful. Those included several years' management experience, banking, working with budgets, customer service, and even direct involvement with taxation. Not to mention my prior elected role on the South Gate Board of Education and chairman of the Finance Committee during that time. And if you know anything about school budgets, that's pretty complicated. I'm fully aware that in 2022, the treasurer position was overwhelmingly voted to be an elected position and not appointed. And although I'm not the first treasurer to be appointed, as Michael pointed out, I would be the fourth. At this time, I do plan on running as your treasurer in the next city election to honor that vote and to keep it an elected position. Giving Allen Parkers the city treasurer that they overwhelmingly voted to keep, almost two to one, and serving that office with the dignity and respect it serves will be my constant goal. So while I'm sorry to step down as city councilman, mayor pro temp, a position that I obtained by receiving, as Matthew pointed out, the majority of the vote, I'm excited for this next chapter to begin, and will promise to keep the priorities I intended for council active and relevant. But we'll, as I said, approach it from a different angle, from the inside through conversations rather than a vote here at this table. I will also, as an Allen Park business owner, keep advocating for our local businesses and help, as always, when I can. I'm so grateful and honored to serve the citizens of Allen Park in any role. The city had a need, and I believe with all my heart that I filled that need and can, that I can fill that need and stay true to myself, because I believe a life lived in service is not a sacrifice but an honor. All that being said, I will begin the work in the treasurer's office immediately. With this appointment, and as one of my first orders of business, I'll be looking into the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, which is part of Section 3206 of the ARPA, as a way to help qualified homeowners who suffered or continue to suffer hardships related to COVID. Next week, there was some time carved out by our city administrator for whomever was going to be appointed to this office, to attend a winter workshop hosted by the Michigan Municipal Treasurer Association, the MMTA, which offers training annually for new and seasoned treasurers. That winter workshop will be in Lansing next week. I'll have regular hours as a treasurer, so I can have an opportunity to meet with anybody face-to-face. Of course, you can always reach through the, call in the office as well or by email. But if you need more face-to-face explanation, please contact me. I'd love to meet with you. Thank you so much for your support and understanding. Best wishes to this council for a successful four years, and to Mr. Dan Lloyd, who will have a seat with this action, and also sincere best wishes to Nancy Nick, who will now assume the office or the role of mayor pro temp, as she received the second highest amount of votes. Congratulations, good luck. And for those interested, Clerk Mizzi will be swearing me in directly following adjournment of this meeting. Good luck to all. Go Blue. God bless and good night.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Mizzi.
It's been crazy. Wow. Okay, I'm going to be a little long-winded. I want to congratulate Tim. I know you'll do a great job, because I also want to thank the mayor and council for making it an elected person. No offense, and no offense to other people. I, I try to explain the role of treasurer and clerk and a lot of people. It goes over their head. We are the checks and balance of not just these people, but of those people, too. Okay? I never want to knock someone because I love this person, but I could honestly say, had we had a strong political treasurer, that studio project probably would never have happened. The second citizens came up to that podium and started saying, where's our money at? How much money do we have? And they never, ever got an answer from anyone. City wasn't going to tell them. Nah. I don't want to knock past people. You have an obligation to them and them only. Those of you somber for losing him, I'm sorry, but an elected person should always sit there and hear, and I will die with that thought. Okay? I have seen the shadiest stuff go down ever in Allen Park history. The only thing that stopped it was, I was elected. Okay? Had I been appointed, I would have been done with. I've seen it before. Mizzi, you're crazy. That's what they said before, when I called out the studio project. So I'm sorry I get so emotional, but you have no idea how important that seat and this seat stays elected regardless. Okay? I don't care if they're part-time. I don't care if they're full-time. You need someone accountable to you, not to them or the city people. Okay? Because that's when you get in trouble. Doing stuff like this is when you stay in control. You control me. You now control Mr. Estimer even more. Because if you don't like what he does, boot him out. And if anyone else, run against him. Run against me. Run against them. We are a government of the people, for the people, by the people. Okay? And when an open, this was a huge fight before the 99 charter, because people left council before. You know what would usually happen? A guaranteed vote was put on. So they just got more powerful. After the charter, they, when the charter came up, they knew, uh-uh, they're not picking their own people. We're going to an elected person. They might not have won, but they got votes. That's the point here. I didn't stay vocal. I, I don't get vocal on issues till after they're voted. I'm, I'm sorry. One of my roles is to try to be as non-political as possible, and I try to stick with it. But this, Ray, I understand where you're coming from, but 20-some thousand people, 18 and over, who are registered to vote, had the right to run for all this stuff. A handful did. And for clerk and treasurer, no one did. Okay? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go into huge thing, but I don't, as long as I sit here, I will make sure you have as many elected officials as possible. That is the key to government, or you lose it. I can't end there. I got to go into business now. I can't end there. I got to go into business now. Voters, presidential primary. Matt, get him on camera. Michael I. Mizzi doesn't care which one you mark because this is not public information, what party you choose, okay? It is a state law. You mark it, you get the ballot you chose. The only one who knows this information will be the political parties, okay? So if someone comes in and can freedom of information your application, I'd be in a lot of trouble if I didn't cross out what your ballot sol. Okay, I was making sure this wasn't someone's phone. I'm holding it up, but, because I handle a lot of these a day. But so when you mark what ballot you want, no, no one other than the political parties will know. Not even my office. I can't keep that information. It's done at a state level. And yes, laws are changing. This is for, I'll be putting out videos before the August and November election. But it's a crazy world. You're also going to get a notice about nine-day early voting. That's coming up. At first, I was the most hesitant person against it. And then I'm like, oh, my gosh, I want to be the first one to do it. But then again, I don't vote in presidential primaries because I don't want anyone to know what my party is, even the party. So I unfortunately probably won't. But now, the unique case here, anyone's in precincts one, two, and three, you do have that third option, okay, of a local only. There is a Melvindale Schools millage election. So we'll be publicizing, well, it's on Melvindale Schools to publicize, but I'll be putting out more information when the ballots actually get printed and see what's on. Because unfortunately, you can't believe everything you hear or you know what's going to happen because we elected a treasurer not too long ago. Now we have a new treasurer. So just bear with me because everyone says, why don't you ever tell us more because it's constantly changing? And I hate giving out wrong information. It's my pet peeve. So I'm getting off my pedestal. So Angela, thank you. Thank you for Angela. I'm done. Thank you all for coming out. God bless you. Good night.
Thank you, Michael. Pretty interesting. You can read a lot of articles when you're getting lots of publications sent to you. And I recall seeing one, I believe it was in the review from the MML, and it had to do with clerks. And the article had to do appointed versus elected. And you can look at it from a lot of different viewpoints. But you ingest all the information that you get. And the bottom line was, at the end of that article, the strong support was elected. And probably for a few other reasons than Mike had mentioned, but I thought he brought up some very good ones. Yeah, I've seen, I think it is important for the checks and balances because I've seen communities where, in particular, the clerk is appointed and I don't think that's a healthy thing, not for your job responsibilities and everything that you have to do. So fully support what you said in that and made some excellent points. Thrilled to death to have Angela as a deputy director. Angela's been with us two years now, working in another capacity under the finance director. Again, one of the individuals who really stood out. We've got some excellent employees, but just always wanting to learn new things. And has, as Tim has pointed out from observation, has the demeanor and ability to handle all kinds of different personalities and handle them well. The only other thing that crossed my mind, again, a lot of mixed feelings, kind of like Matt expressed. You hate to lose someone as good as Tim and hoping that the next mayor pro temp realizes what a full plate she's going to have. And I'm sure is up to the task. But I sat here the other day thinking, it's my second term as mayor. And you would think that maybe the second term would be easier than the first. But it seems that no matter what happens, the only thing that's consistent is that you get some major changes. And at least this time, the upheaval isn't quite as dramatic as with my first term. I wish everyone well. At our next meeting, again, according to charter, we will be recommending replacement for Mr. Estimer, the next vote getter, and that will be Mr. Dan Lloyd. With that, yes, our attorney would like to make a comment.
I just, real quick, I just wanted to thank you for reappointing our law firm. I really appreciate it. It's a honor to serve with everyone here and the administrative staff and all the employees of the city. We don't take this lightly and I just, on behalf of the firm, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Estimer. Yes. Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned at seven oh one.